I'm calling to order the September 9th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely, you can dial 1-4-0-8-6-5-0-3-1-2-3 with access code 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to pause for a moment of silence in remembrance of Jamie Panzik, a Town of Auburn DPW employee who has unexpectedly passed away yesterday due to an unfortunate health episode. I ask that you keep him and his families in our thoughts and prayers. Moving along, we have no one signed up for public comments. We do not have any community organization events. We would need, we are on number five, we would need a motion to reopen the public hearing for the ECO ATM kiosk at the Auburn Mall.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We do have an individual on the meeting from ECO ATM. Does the public have any comments or questions? Do board members have any comments or questions?
I have the same three I had, I guess, last meeting, so I know we, I don't know if we shared that with the applicant, and they want to address it, or if we need to restate it, Madam Chair.
Can we please restate them?
Sure. So, how do you want it done? One at a time?
Yeah, one at a time would be great.
Okay. Be interested to know, because your application doesn't really give us any idea of where the location of the kiosk and what kind of protections you have in place for the public using it.
Julia, were you able to hear the question? Julia, can you hear us?
Hi, my apologies, I am having a really hard time with the audio. I tried dialing in. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you. Could you restate the question, please?
Sure. I'm interested to know where the location of the kiosk is, and what kind of protections you have in place for the public when they're using it.
Were you able to hear that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make that out. Someone able to maybe answer it, or type it in the chat, and I could answer?
I was just going to ask if we have a chat function.
Sure.
We could certainly...
Are you able to hear me? I'm a little closer to the computer.
I can somewhat make out the female voice.
Okay.
But some of them are just really distorted.
Gotcha. So let me try. The question is, where in the mall do you anticipate it to be located? And what kind of protections for the public are there?
I'm sorry, could you try that one more time?
I would speak to work leaders.
Sure. Where in the mall do you think the kiosk will be located? And what kind of protections for the public are there?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I just...
Let me try to type it in the chat for you.
So I do have the site map of where it will be located. So typically, we have a site survey. That hasn't occurred with us yet, but we do send a team in to physically look at where the best place for the kiosk would be in the mall. We have not had that site survey team out yet, but when they do, they produce a site survey that shows the direct location of where it'll be. Unfortunately, we do not have that site survey as of yet.
Can you guys hear her?
Hi.
Very...
Okay. So she said that they are waiting on a site survey to determine where it is going to be located. So go ahead with the second question.
Yeah, so type of protections for the public. We're very proud to work closely with any police department, and we do have quite a record of working with police departments in Massachusetts. As for every customer that turns in a phone, we do collect their ID, so that if the phone is reported as stolen, we are able to identify the person that turned it, not stolen phones. Other protections are we are able to completely wipe the data, so no data from past phone users is used. We also have a holding period for cell phones, to make sure that if someone does report a stolen phone, we're not sending it off to the next process of our operations too soon. We typically have a holding period of 30 days for each phone collected.
So her response was, they work with the police department for protection, they collect IDs, so if the phone is reported stolen, they can determine who put that phone in their service. They do wipe the data from all of the phones, and they have a 30-day holding period.
Excellent. All right. The other question. You collect a lot of personal information from users. How long do you keep it? And how is it stored in between when you collect it and when it's destroyed?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I'm typing it in for you, sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. So, collect a lot of personal information from users, how long do you keep the data? And how do you destroy it?
How is it stored? In-between periods?
So the personal information that we collect is the driver's license, and that is stored in our secure portal. And that is only used when we have requests from law enforcement on specific cases. In the original emails, what the town had sent, a information packet, so let me find the point in the packet that talks about our data. Just give me one moment, please.
Okay. So the only personal information they collect is the driver's license, and there is a portion of this package that talks about their data. She's looking...
I didn't see it. And they're collecting date of birth, they're collecting images, they're collecting a lot of information that really private companies shouldn't be collecting on citizens, and just want to make sure that they're handling it appropriately, and that they're destroying it in a legitimate and proper way, because...
If I may piggyback on that as well, I think one of the questions about how the public is protected, if you look at the license verification, they have a picture of somebody, and it shows quite a bit of background, and if it's in the mall, I want to make sure that no one who is not intending to have their picture taken is part of that verification process.
Correct. And you also don't want them seeing your information.
Yeah, once again, I'm sorry. I'd be happy to answer as soon as I can read it in the chat. I'm so sorry, I just can't make it out from the sound.
Yeah, I'm getting, sorry, I'm getting it, I'm sending it in the chat. For sure.
May I ask where the applicant's located?
Sure.
San Diego.
Julia, I don't know if you can hear me, but can you tell us where you're located?
I'm at that point, I'm not sure. I couldn't follow anything with the information.
So, how is the public protected in the brochure? There's a lot of background.
Absolutely. So, all customers who approach the ECO ATM are asked if it's okay to collect their personal data, and if they are not okay with giving their driver's license and having their photo taken, then they can opt out of the experience. We just simply won't collect a cell phone if we cannot collect that data, because we need to be able to report it to law enforcement.
All right. So she said...
Or...
Go ahead. They have to, when you approach the kiosk, you have to agree to have your picture taken and the data collected? So if you said no, they obviously don't keep that data.
Yeah. Okay. I've heard enough.
Sure.
I actually have two questions. First is, how often is that box empty? And how are people paid for their cell phones?
So the box is typically, yeah, so the box, the bins that hold the cell phones are typically emptied either on a bi-weekly basis or a monthly basis. We then also make sure we have a holding period of 30 days for the cell phones. People are paid in cash, and cash is dispensed through an armored vehicle to the machine, typically on a bi-weekly basis. And to the other question, our corporate headquarters are in San Diego, California, and our warehouse is in Kentucky.
I'm sorry, you're...
What did I put? She said, "You're giving cash?"
Yep. So she said, "Corporate office is in San Diego, they empty the box bi-weekly or monthly, and then they have a 30-day holding period, and cash is dispensed from the ATM." Thank you.
Warehouse is in Louisville, Kentucky.
Warehouse is in Louisville, Kentucky. Are there additional questions?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Is there a motion on the item?
So I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The chair is yes as well. The license is approved.
Three, two.
Yep.
That's a wonderful move. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions regarding the furthering of the process, please feel free to reach me. I'd be happy to leave my contact info in the chat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving along to number six. There are no departmental items, there are no communications. We do have select board general items, a transient vendor license from Chick-fil-A for the Auburn Mall. Did you want to come up here or there, whatever is more comfortable for you?
You're coming out.
Great.
You can see a lot from here.
It's feeling kind of lonely down there.
Just pull this thing down. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, so there's, you're requesting a license for a food truck at the Auburn Mall? Yes. Tell us a little bit about it.
So the Auburn Mall actually reached out to us and asked if we would be interested in setting up in the food court. Unfortunately, we're owner-operator based, so corporate puts a limit on how many locations we can have, and we're at our top right now. We have three. So we have the food truck, Westboro, and Marlboro. So they gave us permission to park the food truck over there. And we actually set up with a temp for the circus one day, and I talked with them about moving back over to, or not back over, because I haven't been there, but moving over to the Reliant Medical side. Seems to be more traffic over there.
Do board members have questions?
I have more of a, I know the last time we approved a food truck or food vendor, that they were supposed to notify the Board of Health on each event. This seems a little more consistent. Is this an event-type thing, where they need to notify the Board of Health? Or is it a notify the Board of Health inspections take place, and they're free to operate as they plan to?
I guess we would have to check with the Board to see what their requirements are, but we'll make sure that they comply with what's in place currently, and we can make that known to the vendor upon issuance of the license.
And then through the chair. Do you plan to operate consistently throughout the week, certain set hours?
So right now, I'm hoping if it's a success, Thursdays would be our day there. It wouldn't necessarily be every Thursday, because we do book private events. It's like this week, we have a private event on Thursday. But my goal would be Thursdays, 11:30 to 7:30.
And then with this license as well, is there a limit to the number? I know other license that we, to have a limit on how many days.
Doesn't say anything, Karen.
It doesn't, but that's why I'm asking, because I know other ones have limits. I just want to make sure, like, again, that it's compliant, you know, it's not, I don't understand that aspect of it. I just want those answers to understand, because again, if you're going to be there most Thursdays, and it exceeds 20 times a year.
Right. And I would also like to, I asked in the last week's meeting, but I'm hoping for open availability. Say sometimes we're planning on going to Laconia, and say something happens, I try to find us close to home base, so we don't have to travel and can still get the day in. Thank you.
We can assign hours of operation, so it's a license. We do have the authority to do that. And typically, that is done with these type of licenses. And I know we've gotten a bunch of these where they show up when, you know, they're needed, whatever, but where are you setting up on the Reliant side? As you say, it is very busy with Reliant.
Yeah, I haven't gotten confirmation from the mall yet.
So, I mean, going forward, it would be nice if we actually had kind of a circulation plan, we had an idea, because we're giving you permission to operate, and you may be in conflict with other people, there could be other issues. So, and that it's a license, and, you know, people can't enforce things that aren't on a license. So...
Are there other questions? I do believe included in this, there is the letter from the DCG that says that they have to receive all necessary permits and inspections from town departments. So that would include the Board of Health. Question?
Correct. I just wanted to verify if it's a one-time thing, or if it's ongoing, because it is a food truck that operates, but it seems like a semi-permanent agreement, so it's going to operate like any other restaurant in town, except it's on wheels.
Can I ask a question? You met with the DCG, right?
Yes.
The Development Coordination Group? And did you tell them what your plans were, maybe trying for every Thursday and everything?
Yes.
And did they have any issues with that?
No.
Okay.
Everyone's been super great.
Okay. And we had our DDIS director and the Public Health Director there. So I think if there are any requirements, it sounds like that would have been vetted at that, at that particular moment.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Fail to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG, which are none, to be placed upon it. I would also just add, hours of operation has to match the mall. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. You're all set?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You too.
Moving along to 8B, we have a Drainlayers license application for Glenn Hines in Lemonster. The applicant does not have to be here for Drainlayers licenses, but if we have any questions, we can get those to him. So do board members have any questions?
Make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, and said license subject to all conditions stated upon. Fail to comply with any and all of these shall render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The chair is yes as well. 8C, proclamations and recognitions, we have none. For 8D, there is a gift acceptance?
I just have one question related to, in the past, we've always included this, and I know we've had issues with open meeting law, issues with not putting applicants' names on things. I'm just concerned, I don't want to see us get dinged if this is going to fall under that, that we didn't put on there who was making the gift and to whomever.
I think it says it right here, doesn't it?
It does, but it's not on the post.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, oh, okay.
So I, if I may, I know in the past, they left this item open because some gifts may come in, and sometimes the check has to be deposited on a timely basis. I guess we could change the policy that we have a deadline, and if it's not in, it gets carried over to the next meeting, if that's the wish of the board.
I just think we should hold this over to the next meeting, put it on the agenda just out of caution, and like I said, when I was first on the board, we did that, but we've also, I know we also, as the manager said, things came in, but we also weren't, you know, under scrutiny for, as we have been in the last several periods. So I just want to make sure we don't incur any issues. I would just make a motion that we hold it over to the next meeting, so that it can be, so that the details can be placed on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are moving along to number nine, Town Manager Items.
So I'm happy to report, thank you, Madam Chair, that the town was notified in a letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, that our housing production plan, our five-year plan, was approved. The effective date of that plan is July 9th, 2024, and the five-year plan will carry us out to July 8th, 2029. I know CMRPC did a presentation before the board that led to the submittal of that plan, and it was with, like I said, this letter was received on August 27th, so we wanted to get it to the board. So it's good news. We have a five-year plan in place that will guide us into the future. Moving on to another notification we received from the state on item 9B.
Can I ask a question about 8? So I know we have projects that are coming up, or they're going to have their occupancy. Are we ready to file for Safe Harbor? And are those documents being prepared?
So it is my understanding that those units get counted when they are occupied and not permitted. The Eastland Partners project, one of the buildings is currently occupied, and I believe an occupancy was issued today for building number two. There are 12 buildings altogether. So those numbers are going to incrementally come on over the next year, that will count towards our benchmark of 10%. The next item, on the other hand, so I hope that answers your question.
No, so it kind of does, except once they have their occupancy, they count, and we are, as long as we show a 35% increase, we can get the Safe Harbor.
So I guess that has to be submitted and reviewed by Mass Housing in order for them to make that designation. We will look into that, and we will do what it takes in order to get to Safe Harbor that will allow us to at least potentially defer projects for a period of time because of that recognition. But that's something I will work with Adam on, but I'm not quite sure in terms of, this is our first time actually, we would be applying for Safe Harbor. I just don't know the technicalities or the conditions that are required for us to get that.
I do know in a previous meeting, we asked about those numbers, and we asked when that occupancy, if the whole project, or each building. I don't recall getting an answer on that. I just, as you're going through this, if you could let us know on each building, because, again, according to this, 35 units, we've got two buildings online. I don't know exactly how many were in each building, but I think we got to be pretty close.
I believe building number one was 28 units.
Correct.
So that's, that's why I'm saying, so we should be prepared.
There are a total of 325, so that, the math adds up, about 28 per unit times 12 is going to put you in that vicinity, so. And I believe we can expect all of the buildings to be occupied roughly a year from now, at the end of next summer. That's what, that's what the build-out would allow for occupancy for.
Correct. And that, at 70 units, we would be Safe Harbor for two years, so.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, can you ask Dr. Menard to confirm this? But I believe that Safe Harbor only protects us from filings of new, so any that have already been submitted, such as Perry Place, are able to go through the 40B process. It doesn't protect us from the 40BA. We just want to make sure that the residents and the ZBA are clear on that, so if we can just ask for that clarification.
Thank you.
And speaking of projects that are already in the pipeline, we just heard from Mass Housing relative to the Perry Street project, consisting roughly of about 150, 255 units. So that was conveyed to the board as soon as we received it, although there was like a six-day gap between the date of the letter and when I received it. We did send something to one of the butters, who was going to get the word out to the neighborhood that this has been approved. The developer has two years from the date of that letter, August 21st, to file an application for a comprehensive permit before the ZBA. That would be in the process, to the best of my knowledge, and I just checked with our town planner today, there's been no correspondence between the applicant and the town relative to that application as of today.
Do board members have any questions?
Yeah, so this has been provided to the ZBA. They have the same letter that we received.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think there's, it kind of outlines some of the requirements. I think there's, it kind of outlines some of the requirements, and as the process moves forward, it's a helpful document for them to at least go back on. And I think that was a lot of our intention with this process, and I, I know we've kind of...
And what I was happy to see is Mass Housing made it very clear that these issues were raised by the municipality, the town, and the neighborhood abutters, and that they would be addressed before the ZBA. So at least the developer knows that, the ZBA knows that, and expect that application to get some level of scrutiny that has not been seen to, to this point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, 9C. The period for applications is closed. We received one application. That being said, there is a process to make that appointment. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Library Trustees would have to post that meeting a week in advance, consistent with the law, to make that appointment. I, it's up to the Board, it's up to the Selectmen, the BOT, given with the one application, whether we would schedule an interview for that night for this one individual. So I'm looking for some guidance from the Board. But, and when would you like to have that joint meeting, so we can reach out to the BOT? Would you prefer to do it at the next September meeting, or the first October meeting?
I would say, as is a vacancy on their Board, why don't we ask them what they would like? Because they meet off-schedule to us. So they may want to adjust their meeting schedule to do something, rather than have their business meeting and then come here, which I know is usually not a terribly long period of time. But I would just assume, ask the Board of Trustees what their, you know, their availability is, what they would like to see.
I, I don't know their availability. Certainly, we can check tomorrow, but if they would suggest a meeting that is not consistent with the Board's schedule, is the Board willing to meet on another night? Or do you want me to try to coordinate it to a scheduled meeting that...
So I, I know that they meet the first Wednesday of every month. So ideally, if they're willing to meet during our next meeting, sort of in the beginning, like we traditionally do, that would allow this person to be appointed, should the Boards vote in favor, sworn in, in time for their next meeting.
Excellent point. I think that would be the best option, if they could meet at our next.
I will call the Chair tomorrow and suggest that the joint meeting take place at your next September meeting.
May I ask also, this position, this opening was advertised in the usual places?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we're moving along to number 10. We have no tabled items. We do have member items. The first one is the discussion on the A, B, C, C Advisory and Local Licensing.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
9D?
Yes.
Can I just, can I just ask about that? So have we sent an email notice to all of the members of our Boards and Commissions?
We have. But I just wanted to put it out there publicly as well. So the plan is they have a meeting in this room, beginning at 6 o'clock on the 26th of September. Hopefully, we'll have a full, full house. We plan on televising that meeting. So those who are unable to attend will have an opportunity to more or less get some training by watching the rerun of the, of the video. Also, those who are in attendance, we'd like to capture their names, so we can at least prepare a list of those individuals who have gone through the training, provide that to our town clerk, who can keep that on file. And as individuals are being trained online, somehow we'll develop some type of, of paper trail that will allow us to track them as well.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So now we're moving on to number 10, Tabled Items. We have none. Number 11 is Member Items. There's a discussion on, well, we need to establish a process, a policy and application for liquor licenses. Did everybody, I believe Sharon resents the email with the information. Did everybody have a chance to look at it? Is there any way you would prefer going about this, now that the state is not going to approve liquor light, well, now that they're, they have moved that to the municipalities, how would we like to move forward?
They're just moving the responsibility for amendments for the liquor licenses, correct? For businesses that want to serve alcohol outside?
So that is my understanding. I'm not, I'm not going to pretend to be a guru in, in this area. I know Danielle is. She'd be an asset to provide to the Board. If the Board would like to set up a subcommittee, we can get Danielle involved to help give you some ideas on, on what may be best suitable for Auburn.
Is that something this Board would be interested in doing, to have a subcommittee, to have a policy put forth before us to review? Okay, is there, would we need two Board members? Could we just...
I would suggest two Board members.
Two? Is there anybody that would be interested in serving on the subcommittee? Okay.
I would too.
Okay, great. So we will get that set up with Danielle?
Yeah, I don't think there's a rush for that, but yes, we'll coordinate that with Danielle. And Steve and Ian, if you can at least give us some idea of what, what time to work best for you to meet with, with town administration, we can certainly plan that out in advance.
Do we need a formal vote? Because that's not on the agenda, to create a subcommittee. Don't say...
I, I don't thi, no.
Don't guess.
No, I think we have time. I think what we can do is, we can formalize that by bringing in a vote at the next meeting, knowing that that's the route the Board wants to...
Great. And our second member item, it's from Mr. Crane, so I will let you go ahead.
Thank you. So for those of you who may not know, on August 26th, there was a crash at the intersection of Hampton and Jerome that caused a residence fence to be demolished. It caused another car to, to lurch over essentially a tall wall at the Elm Hill Water District and crashed through the fence, and then they were stuck there. Auburn Fire had to secure the vehicle before removing them and then transporting to the hospital. And within probably about an hour, I don't know about the rest of you, but my phone blew up with text messages and Facebook messages with pictures from the area residents, saying that this is happening all too often at this intersection. So I went to the Mass DOT Crash Data Crash Portal, and sure enough, in the last five full years plus 2024, there have been 12 crashes at that intersection alone, and that does not include the most recent one. It's not updated. So there's actually been 13, at least 13 crashes at that intersection. Of the 12, 11 of them were angle crashes, one of them was a rear-end clash, crash. So the residents are very concerned about that intersection, and I understand that in the greater, you know, scheme of things, Route 20 and Route 12 certainly are our highest crash streets, as, 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 you know, as, as highway, you know, Mass DOT jurisdiction roadways. But I'm seeing more and more, and hearing from more and more residents, that they are concerned about intersections such as Jerome and Hampton, Auburn Street and Oxford Street North, and, and other locations where there are regular crashes occurring at these intersections. And they would like us, certainly in the town, to take a more proactive step to investigate these crashes, see why they're happening, and then take steps to mitigate them. So I'm asking, you know, with respect on behalf of several residents who contacted me for this intersection alone, to see if we will, if the Board is willing to request a report from the Auburn Police Department and the Department of Public Works Engineering Division on the growing number of crashes at this intersection, the causes of the crashes, and any recommendations that they are investigating to improve safety at this intersection.
So, do you have any questions?
I'm happy to do it, but there's nothing in here about a vote. So I, I don't know.
Well, there's a request for a report, so that's an implied vote, that we are going to request for a report.
And for myself, I would want to have a broader search on this. You know, Paketchog, I'm on Paketchog quite frequently. The speeds on Paketchog, as well as, all of us can have a lot of input. St. Joseph's obviously has always been, since I was a very young person. You know, I would like to see us widen this, so that it's not particular, so that we have a plan for traffic enforcement at regular intervals. You know, Prospect Street is, that's, that's a terrible area for, you know, areas, Appleton Road, you know, obviously, people are speeding at the, you know, where Warren and Waterman meet Bryn Mawr Extension. You know, there is, there's quite a bit, so, but it's whatever people want to do.
Can I play devil's advocate on this one just a little bit? So I don't know if 12 is a lot, since 2000, one is, can be considered a lot, but should we have a recommendation of any area that has provided certain number of crashes? Or, again, I don't know if 12 crashes were fender benders, or as bad as this past one. And I just want to make sure if we're going to ask them to start investigating a lot, that we set some parameters, X number of crashes over a five-year period or something.
So I can tell you, I was not expecting to see 12 crashes at this intersection, especially 11 at angled crashes. The federal highway sets the standard of five in a two-year period, sorry, five in a one-year period, or six in a two-year period, to establish always stops. Certainly, I'm not proposing an always stop on the hill for Jerome, but I think that this type of, you know, really quality of life issues need to start getting addressed. Our residents don't, you know, the vast majority of our residents don't live on 12, on 20 and 12. They live on Hampton, Jerome, Paketchog, Oxford North, Auburn Street, et cetera. And I don't think, you know, at least the feedback I'm getting from the residents is they're not seeing enough action on these roadways, and not just from police, you know. Enforcement certainly is, is an important part of it, but we cannot hire enough police officers to man every one of these intersections 24/7. We need to start looking at engineering, and we need to start looking at education as well, the, the critical three Es for, for safe roads. I agree with Mr. Carpenter that there are a lot of streets and a lot of intersections that need to be looked at. My concern in opening it wide open for this report is that everything's going to start getting watered down, and I don't think we're actually going to see a report in a timely manner, if we're asking them to look town-wide for all crashes. You know, if there are other critical locations that residents want brought forward, or this Board wants brought forward, I think we should, you know. But there is a clear request in this neighborhood, and concern in this neighborhood, that Jerome Street and this, and the intersection with Hampton is, is a concern. And I, and I don't want to pass that by and water it down by opening it up to town-wide. Quite frankly, I would look for residents to come forward with other streets, with other concerns, and we should certainly be asking for those, those intersections, those streets to be looked at as well. I think, you know, this is probably a good opening for our Board to, you know, once we get this report, and, and once we request additional data from other intersections, to start looking more in this, from a, from a town perspective. But I just want to make sure that we don't broad-brush this to the point where, you know, we're not addressing these sort of key locations where residents are calling.
No, I don't want to broad-brush it either, but to Mr. Chambers' point, residents don't communicate with this Board regularly. You happen to live close to that intersection. So obviously, people are going to reach out to you, and this is a horrific crash, and I want everybody to feel safe. So I'm certainly not asking you to explain or saying I'm not going to vote for it. I'm just saying, we may not hear from the residents. So to Mr. Chambers' point, asking for a report, not to have it watered down, but to create a criteria, to have intersections looked at off of the crash data that you reference, would be a point where we can, we could potentially do that. Now, does that mean we have to stop everything and wait for that? No, I'm not saying that. But I do think that that's something that we should be considering.
So I, I think that's something that could come out of this report here, is for them to recommend standards that this will trigger them investigating and coming to the Board for certain issues, instead of us, you know, being reactive, perhaps being proactive.
Right. Would it be worthwhile, since the standard is if there's six within a two-year period, looking at any intersection or street where there's been six crashes outside of 20 and 12, because those are much bigger issues? But at any street where there was, there is six or more? Because I feel like...
But six or more is for intersections. I just want to clarify that. That's intersections to trigger an always stop on their federal highway.
I, I don't know by what metrics you measure whether or not an intersection is dangerous. I'm, I'm sure it has to do with number of accidents versus number of traffic counts on the road.
Their crash rates.
Daily basis. And I'm sure the Police Department has that data, that they could easily spit out to say, listen, here are the problem areas throughout town. I agree, this report may generate some awareness on how you measure that and how you look at other intersections throughout town, but you've got to start somewhere.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chambers. Just one other thing that, just to bring in part of this discussion, is that on this particular intersection, it's a blind quarter, corner due to a resident fence right on the corner of the intersection. So, you know, in addition to this, we, we might want for Dr. Menard to weigh in as well on whether that fence is permitted per zoning. When was it constructed, and does it, does it apply? You know, do we have something in our zoning that says you can't put a, a tall fence at an intersection to block sightlines?
I'm going to make a motion that we request the report based on the criteria that's been discussed at this intersection, and that we bring forward at the next meeting another item to discuss as a Board, and publicizes on, you know, the electronic signs, put signs up on Boards for the public to be aware if they have concerns, to come in and talk to the Board about traffic-related issues. That's going to be my motion.
Yeah, should we put in the motion that we're going to seek input from the Police Chief? Was that...
I think that's what the...
I can certainly...
Is that already there? Okay.
I have no problem adding the Police Chief and any related departments, such as the Fence Viewer, and, you know, I don't know that the Planner is necessarily the person, but we'll add any and all relevant.
I stand corrected, Todd, it is in there already. Thank you.
Can I second for a discussion? I know you were trying to move it along, but is there criteria in which the DPW is engaged after accidents, or looking at roadway safety, and not just a police officer response or ambulance response?
I'm sure there's a collaborative effort between PD and Engineering or DPW on situations that they deem as being hazardous and could improve. I'm sure those discussions take place, but to, to what extent, I don't know. So I know they've been involved in discussions as it relates to pedestrian safety and some grant money that we received, and where those areas are, where they're putting the focus on those areas. And typically, those are areas that are primarily high pedestrian traffic areas. How that relates to accidents that occur on these intersections, there may be no correlation at all, but that's something we can discuss with, with, with both Departments.
And, and I know I had a resident reach out in March about Jerome, but not specifically that intersection. So I know there was police response and data and tracking around that, but not specifically the accidents. It was more about the traffic flow and the amount of speeding that was taking place there. So I, we are aware of that issue, but again, the response wasn't necessarily accidents. So I just want to make sure if we're seeing increased... So I just want to make sure if we're seeing increased accidents, that the proper people are being involved, but we can certainly have more discussion on that. I just wanted to second and make sure that people know we are trying to resolve that, and I just wanted to make sure the right people are involved.
My only reason for making the motion is it seemed like there was consensus. I don't attempt to move things along. I like discussion.
Do board members have any other questions? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have no public comments for our second public comment period. In our package, there are meeting minutes from August 19. Are there any changes or amendments?
I had just mentioned earlier, and I sent it in an email, it's not really, we just needed on page four, a heading between the DDIS reports and where Wallace Ave started. That was the only thing. So that was, otherwise, no.
Okay, well, then I will accept them with that minor change. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is.